Okay, whenever you guys are ready.
So the supervisor is not feeling well tonight and she will not be joining us in line, but she will be joining us. The video which she's allowed to do under the executive order of the governor that is good until the 15th of August. But since the supervisor is not here to run the meeting, I think it's appropriate for somebody to make a motion to designate one of the board members and I think Anna is the person.
Thank you, Maureen, to designate Anna as our head of meetings.
All right, I'll second her.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very.
So show yours, Dan.
Let's stand for the pledge. I pledge the nation's citizens. We have a moment of silence for one resident that died, Elizabeth Libby Minhausen. She lived on Cemetery Road for a number of years. She used to be election inspector down in Delphine, so if we could have a moment of silence. Okay. I'm sure.
Okay, so thank you for moving me up. It's a double meeting night for me. So on the back page is the receipts and disbursements page of my report. A pretty good month for town court fees, $2,700. Our night class interest continues to go up, so we're looking quite good on that. I've never seen hundreds of dollars like that in a long time, so that's really good news. Court fines are at about 50% year-to-date on the budget, so we're improving and it looks like we're getting a little closer where we should be on that. Charter communications franchise fees were just slightly above 50%, so that's good. We'll be a little bit over our budget there. We did get one developer deposit and our swim registrations were at about 87% of what we expected for budget. So we still have Fabius and Lafayette, which are paying for their students to us. So it looks like we're going to make budget on that for revenue items as well. On the highway fund, some really good news there. We got the second half of the snow and ice removal and it was 66 cents higher than budgets. And we did, BR got some of its chips worked on, the state reimbursement, the aid for getting highway repairs done early in the year, so we did receive $111,000 there as well. So that's great news. As far as the rest of the report, it was pretty quiet down through. Nothing really jumped out at me as needing to be addressed. As far as the main report goes and the big numbers, our general spending is at about 35% without the trash district in there and our revenues in the general fund are at 79%. Our highway spending is at 27% and our revenues are at 91%. That was really helped out by the big chunk of church money coming in for us. Of. So I think that was it on the reports. If anybody has any questions or if not, we make a motion to move that.
I'll make a motion. We accept the. Okay, report. All in favor?
Aye.
I did have a transfer sheet. I know it's not on the list. I spoke to BR and we got all of the numbers in for the extra money we're getting from the state for our capital improvements for the chips, extreme winter recovery, pave New York, and a new program called Pay Our Potholes. So they increased our budget by 107,173. So we're still not getting quite as much paving as we showed with the oil escalation and stuff, but we're still way ahead of what we expected. So we need a motion to do that transfer and make those monies available.
Yeah. I'll make the motion. The money make available.
Okay. All in favor?
The bank reconciliations have three signatures on them. We want to make a motion to approve the bank reconciliation supervisor clerk and.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Bill, so.
I can hear you. We were trying to say something.
I'm not going to vote on those because I didn't review them.
So the vouchers, do you want to hold off on that until after Dave reviewed them then?
Why don't we?
You can leave them here and I'll pick them up on my way back. Okay, that was all I had for today. Unless anybody else had any questions. All right, maybe I'll see you before you're done. My other meeting's fast.
Thanks, Tim. Next is the public hearing and the local law permit board members to virtually attend town meetings in accordance with the New York State's open.
I'm going to give you a brief overview of the local law. So the local law. Is an offshoot of the executive order we just talked about, which allows our board members to video into meetings instead of being there in person under the COVID rules. The executive order was put into place so that during the times when people weren't allowed to meet publicly, they allowed it through video conferencing. It became a very popular way to attend board meetings and the state legislature has passed a law that said that. On board meetings, town board members can participate in town board meetings under a video conference technology. If a couple of conditions are met, the first condition is that you have to have a majority of the board present. So you can't meet publicly without a majority of the board. A second is that you have to make yourself available. You have to be able to see the person. We have to be able to. We have to be able to hear the individual who's in the conference again. You're going to do that. You also have to make that out to the public. So that the public can participate through the video conferencing system for public comment, for instance, with those types of things. And then you would have to create various reasons or exceptions for extraordinary means to be able to participate in a video conference. We can do that by a separate policy. It's not in the local law, but there could be a separate policy that we can consider at some point in the future if you want to go forward with allowing this video conference. So that's an explanation of laws. Anybody have any questions for me about it?
The three people here have to be able to see them on the screen.
Right.
And the public has, we already have the public as eligible anyway.
Yes. So it's not going to be much different at all than what we do. We, other than the fact that you need to have a quorum of the members present before you. Before you go.
So in this case, as an example, assuming Renee was sick and she was gone, this would all be appropriate the way we're doing it.
So yes, that's under this law. We're not even, we're not acting tonight under this law because obviously it hasn't been passed. We're still acting under the executive emergency order of the governor.
Okay.
Which, which allows people to participate like, like we're doing tonight.
Well, this law then, this what we're going to talk about, is this then going to oversee, overstep the, Colonel?
So we expect that the governor is not going to continue to extend that executive order into the future. There's going to come a point when she's going to say, okay, COVID is now no longer a thing and we don't have to do that. This is going to be in place instead of that and it's, I think it's, the law sunsets in 2024 if I'm not mistaken. So the legislature is kind of giving this, the legislature is giving this a trial run to see how it goes. And then in 2024, if they extend it further, it's really an amendment or a change to the open meetings law that allows us to take less.
What are the? One of the acceptable reasons according to the law here for, for it to be on. You know, to be remote.
Well, we haven't passed, we haven't passed, this authorizes us to do video conferencing, then there will be a policy that this board will consider. I have provided you with a copy of a policy that you should consider, but that, you don't have to pass that tonight.
Right.
Because we're still under the executive order of the governor, but it's what this board determines, the majority of this board determines are extraordinary circumstances. That would be the extraordinary circumstance. The statute itself does not list what an extraordinary circumstance is. It leaves it up to the municipal board to make that decision.
It's something that like all the towns are passing probably similar or same thing.
Not all of them. Some of them are. I was at the county legislature yesterday. They passed it for county legislative meetings, but they did not even, they did not define extraordinary circumstances. They left that up to the chairman of the county legislature to make that determination as to what, what an extraordinary circumstance would be.
So our two options are let it play out until 2024 or make a, make a move now in.
No, the state law sunsets in 2024.
Okay.
So this would only be good through 2024 unless the state legislature extends it.
Gotcha.
So this, if you pass this tonight, it goes into effect within the filing with the secretary of state within 20 days.
Okay. And this is just until, unless the state extends it to 2024 for this, or this go past that.
The state legislature passed a law earlier this year that says we can pass local laws to allow video conferencing separate and distinct from the executive order. That's what this does. That conforms to the state statute that was passed two months ago. You don't have to do this if you don't want to. It, it does, some towns are deciding not to do it because they don't have the technology available to have the kinds of video conferencing network we have and to allow the public participation in meetings. So several towns that don't have that sophistication are not doing it. In the town of Pompey, we have been doing that. So it's really not much of a change from what we would be doing. It's not in the boards. They've already invested in that technology.
I'm. So Nikki, it was published, right, for the public hearing? Do we need a motion to override the reading of this?
To waive, to waive the reading of the public notice.
Motion. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
The way the reading of the public notice that was published in the paper.
The second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried.
And a motion to open the public hearing.
Who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll open the public hearing.
I'll say that. I don't know if anybody signed up. There was a sign up sheet there. They put out for anybody to speak, I believe.
Yeah. Deborah Burnier on 2027.
I think you need to come up here again.
Faceless player. 2027, I'll be, and I just wanted to ask, what was, Jim had asked some of the extraordinary circumstances for this sort of needing to be virtual. I don't really remember hearing what he said.
It's defined by the town board. They will define what an extraordinary.
So do they have any idea what we're going to?
No, that's a policy we're going to have to discuss.
Okay, in private or in public?
The policy would have to be approved in public.
Okay, so that, so it won't be debated tonight? Circumstances?
We're just voting to see if we want to go with video conferencing. That's all that tonight's, the public hearing is about.
Okay, so that was a question next. I know that, I believe you're involved with the town mailers. They said that they weren't going to do video conferencing.
No, they are doing video conferencing.
Yeah, okay, so I'm one of those video conferences.
Not unlimited videos.
So what were the sort?
Video conferencing that are, that is allowed under state law and under this local law.
Okay, so extraordinary.
Yes, as they define.
As the board defines. Okay, and that's, the town mailers passed that.
That's correct.
Thank you. I just want to also say that I think it would be beneficial for the, the board members to be here year-round, you know, not, you know, part-time residents or.
That has nothing to do with this part of it, though. That's going to be part of the policy.
Well, I mean, if they can't make some meetings, they're obviously not here, so.
But if they make them.
Well, they're not, they're not living here. They're in other places, so as we know. So I think it'd be beneficial if the people that were on the board were residents, full-time year-round residents. And that's all I'm going to say about it. Thank you.
Anybody else? I didn't sign in. I looked over here and didn't sign. So I'm Winter Wendy. I can do that easily, yes. I live at 3741 Waterville Road. I did take the initiative to send each and every board member a letter on this subject. I even sent one to Counselor Angel.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, Angela, okay. So I realize that we have not got to the part yet about coming up with allowances for people not to be actively participating here in the town. And when we get to that point, I will support the fact that you have to be here. So I don't think that being 1,200 miles away, as I stated in my letter to each and every one of you, is an acceptable way to behave in this community. If you're not in a community, you're not seeing people, you're not a church, you're not around people, you're not getting input from the community. So it has worked well for some folks in the past, but I think it's time that people be here in the present. So that's my thought. I will finish signing that. I am not opposed to video conferencing, but I just believe when you come up with the allowances, that you should be here. So that's it. Thank you.
Barbara Stacer, 3457 Sweet Road. And the only thing I wanted to ask is because I, I think that we've seen it quite a bit with a lot of the participation on Zoom meetings. This participation has not been high for any of the talent meetings. I think you're starting to see more people come in as people start getting more comfortable. So I do think it's important to be in person and have that, you know, conversations and things like that. So I wanted to add that, but I also wanted to ask, do we know, I mean, I just think about the population as well as kind of where we are in, in the town. And I just got internet a couple of years ago. We didn't have internet available. So what is the availability of internet in the town? Do we feel that there's enough availability for people to be able to join these meetings? Or is there anything out there for the, you know, the elderly population that might not be able to join a Zoom meeting to kind of show them how to do it, how to engage in it? I think that it's a very specific demographic that you target with virtual meetings. And if, you know, someone doesn't, has never joined a Zoom or doesn't know how to log in or ask a question or participate in any manner, I think that's something important to consider.
You don't have internet.
Well, I know the county has an initiative that they're trying to extend, broaden throughout the town. I want to make something clear.
People can still come.
Yes, exactly.
But even the communication for like when the meetings are going to happen takes place on Facebook and a lot of people don't choose not to have Facebook. I think that.
But that's the whole purpose of this law is for those who choose to join by video, they would be able to. But those who, we will always have a meeting, an in-person meeting at town hall that people don't have the technology or don't have the ability to.
Are we, are we putting meeting notices out, out there to people outside of Facebook?
The meeting notices are scheduled on January.
Right, I'm saying about people that don't, I mean, if they're not here because they couldn't come because of COVID and they haven't been able to go online or whatever, that they don't have the access, how are they knowing? I, I think there used to be like signs that would go up to let people know when, when meetings were like around town, so.
The meetings are scheduled the first Monday of every month. That's, that's, that's the organizational meeting. Everybody knows in the town of Pompey that those are the meeting nights, except on tonight, of course. That's listed on the website.
It is, it is listed, right?
January 3rd, when I have the meeting minutes, if it wasn't, if it wasn't the typical first Monday of the month, it was posted in January every month for the whole calendar year of when the town board meetings have been.
I think the point you're making is a lot of people don't have internet, some of the elderly people.
Right, it's just in general. They're posted here on the town hall. If you go into the best of you, there is a whole list of every, every single month for 2022 of every meeting that's taking place here. That's good to know. It'd be good to get that by mail, too. Thanks.
Nikki, can I ask you a question? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Don't you post those too at the post office?
I do.
I mean. They're posted around town, so if people don't have internet. The, the, the traditional way of notifying people of meetings has always been through legal notice in the newspaper and posting it around town and the meeting minutes from the organizational meeting. So I'm a little bit confused about, this is just better. This gives people more access than, not less, to be allowed to see the meetings virtually. Even if we have internet, it still allows people that do. We've had very strong participation since we have started virtual meetings. We're allowing virtual attendance with the public.
Again, without this, we wouldn't be able to put it out, or would we? I'm just asking the question.
Without what?
Without, without passing this here, would we be able to put the?
This is about participation by town board members who were not in town for that meeting. That's what this is really about. It bootstraps, if you're going to do that, you're also going to be required to make it available to everyone. If this board decides it does not want to do this.
You don't have to.
We don't have to do this. Every board, every meeting would be in person. You want to come to a meeting, you got to come to the meeting. That's, the public can come and just like we've been doing for 20 years before this.
And that would also shut down the people trying to dial in.
Right.
That, that was. Whatever. Seems like it provides more benefit to the community by having that.
This would expand the, the public's ability to participate or be involved in the meetings. Instead of having to be, I mean, the virtual, but this isn't about the public necessarily. It's about the board. It's about, and it's about not just this board, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but every town board, planning board, zoning board, ECC. Okay.
Anybody else? I have one more question if I could. Um, please, how do you know who's on these meetings, Zooming? Is there, do you have access?
Yeah, there's participation.
There's a participation.
Everybody.
There's 11, there's nine additional participants on right now and there's 17 on Facebook.
Okay, so you, but you are able to see who, correct?
I, um, yes, on here. And you can also see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Facebook, it's harder.
Do any of them have questions?
Right.
Veronica, are any of them?
No. Someone is commenting. Except, wait, there was one. Carter Riley. I want Zoom meetings. I like this format.
Thank you. Nobody else? A motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, I'll second up. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There was another comment. Oh, sorry. I can't keep, now people are commenting. Always when we close. Jim and Joanne Schoenmaker, Water Railroad. We have found the ability to attend the town board meetings virtually to be a real asset and support the board's continuation of the process. Dan Palladino, many people travel or go south for a few months, many residents. We should not exclude them. If your permanent residence is Pompey, then it should not matter. And that's it for now.
We reach out? No, that's okay. All right.
Okay. You guys want to do, run a, say it?
I mean, I, I think, I mean, I, I think it's important. I think it makes sense. All our work meetings, you know, they're all, it's so much easier. You can still be productive, you know, and you're not right here for whatever reason.
Take the motion?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I want to, I want to say I think it's good for the public to be able to get on. Definitely. Probably nicer, you know, you can do what's happening without having to be in person. I think that's good. I mean, we can debate later on what particular reasons there are, but I think that the idea of having it as an option is, is unacceptable, I think. You know, you know, this doesn't set specific guidelines, but I think we could definitely, I think it's a good idea to continue.
And Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but does, isn't there another state law that you, if you are out of town, you go on a public location, you can participate in?
That's, that's the existing public, public officer's law allows you to participate in a town board meeting. I think they use the word telephonically. It doesn't have to be by video, but.
But it has to be in.
But it has to be in a public place and the public has to be informed of where you are so that they can also participate at that place. It's a little outdated, but.
It works and. As I do, if I go away, I still know what's going on because I'm in contact with people.
Right.
So you had a motion in a second?
A second. Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, that's local line number 2022, one?
Two.
No problem, okay. We'll talk about it.
Pivot Energy Tier Three Solar Project. Needs, the board needs completion of seeker part two. Determination.
So my, my hope for tonight would be that before we complete seeker. That the board gives me a sense of where they want to be on this local law. So that at the next meeting, I can have something drafted, whether it's in support of the local law or not in support of the local law. I will also draft a seeker resolution to reflect that kind of conversation, but it's hard for me to draft the resolution without kind of getting a sense of where the board wants to be on this. So my hope was that the board can kind of give me a sense of where it wants to be, gives the public a sense of where they are on this local law. And we can be, I know, move forward at the next meeting.
Can I acknowledge that we got some emails?
Absolutely.
Well, we got seven emails in favor, nine emails in favor, seven against. Up here, there were two petitions submitted. One here, 153 names on it. 70 of them are Pompey residents. The only way we could tell was to go through voter registration list or property. There were a lot, Rochester, no addresses.
That was in favor or opposed?
Opposed to it.
Opposed to the law.
We got another one that was in favor of it and there were 103 signatures and there were 11 that were not residents of the town of Pompey. And those are, all the petitions are in file with Nikki.
And those were, that was 130 signatures, not 103.
Oh, 130, thank you. And 11 that did not have, failed a Pompey address. And Dave, who wants to go first? Feelings?
All right, I'll go first. Since I'm the newest, my name's David Angelo. My background, just so you get a feeling, I live at 4345 Winding Creek Road, which is the preserve of the north end of town. So for my house, I wouldn't see any solar development anywhere, but realize wholeheartedly that it's a very energized topic. So for the last 31 years, I'm, I'm in the sustainable industry. We're a Fortune 500 company. We do solar energy savings, guaranteed energy savings, asset renewal projects. We do solar energy savings, guaranteed energy savings, asset renewal projects all around the world. So from a knowledge standpoint, I have a, a fair amount of knowledge when it comes to solar and the benefits of solar. Um, you know, my hat's off to Gordon and his team for looking at the, looking at the, um, opportunity in a multiple, multiple different ways, trying to make sure that provides the, the optimum solution for the town based on where we are in the process. So Renee provided me a bunch of information, um, so I could get up to speed because I literally knew nothing about the, the solar project until I got on the board a month ago. So I read through, um, the, the solar book, which is great. You can all see it right here. Tier three solar book, read everything about that. Um, read through all the, uh, meeting minutes that had to do with the solar, uh, read the planning board meeting minutes, uh, September, November, December twenty-one, and read through the master plan. So that was all provided to me by Renee. What I didn't realize was that the planning committee had already decided, I voted on this at four to one, that we should not proceed with a solar project in the community. Um, I didn't know that until I read through it. The, the way I look at the solar project is, uh, it does provide some benefits, but my job is to look at it from the benefit of the town and what does it do for the community. And so far, I've, I spoke with Gordon a few times on the phone, um, looked at some additional math that he put together. Uh, it's, it was definitely helpful, but in the end, I still don't feel comfortable understanding the dollars and cents that are associated with doing a project like this and how it rolls down to the, the bottom dollar for the community. I look at it as a benefit versus risk scenario. And in my mind, you know, there's five things that the plan, the master plan put together. Preserve agricultural land, preserve open space within the town. I'm sure you guys have all read this, that, you know, it's the hottest topic going. So from my standpoint, you know, my bottom line is, um, in light of everything, I'm not against solar, but in this scenario, I, I've yet to see the dollars and cents make sense for the community so that we can outweigh the risk with a substantial benefit. So that, that's my thirty seconds.
I certainly don't have Dave's background, um, but do have an, an engineering degree, so I have some technical background, but the way I approached this was to create a decision tree, and I'll come sort of wise in the road, at which point I went one way or the other. Um, the first one was, is this project just criteria-driven, meaning that they meet a set of criteria, which case, if they do, we approve it? Or is it discretionary, meaning it's up to us? And it was made very clear to me that this is, this is a discretionary decision. This is not one whereby the applicant just meets a set of criteria. So the second sort of why in the road that I came to was, so it's discretionary. Is it controversial or is it not controversial? Obviously, this is controversial because if it wasn't controversial, it'd be easy. We would just give it a thumbs up. But then you get into, are the majority for it or the majority against it? I've read all the emails, taken in all the information, the thoughts that people have given me. And it was at that point that I decided also to make this, from my perspective, a business decision. Business decision from the perspective of the town. You know, if the town was engaged in a project, just like a business is, would they take this project or would they not? So I did sort of a net present value calculation, looking at the potential cash flows to the town, meaning looking at the revenue we get from the developer versus the potential top, the potential cost, factoring in a series of different risks. And from my perspective, you know, I reached a negative net present value calculation for this project, meaning I would not be in support of it, uh, from that perspective. You know, I, I think the town is stretched right now in terms of their resources and their ability to already police and enforce other things that are going on in the town. And I think that played a lot into my concern about any of the different scenarios outside of the perfect one occurring. It would be, it would put undue pressure on the town and, um,
And that specific issue you're talking about, ability.
Well, if you're gonna do a project assessment, right, you're gonna build in different scenarios or different outcomes. And certainly, we can assume that everything goes beautifully, and even under that scenario, which didn't meet the criteria that I would use to.
And one of your concerns, for instance, the, that if this project is done, then, um, we would have to police it.
What would be the enforcement?
Yeah, how, how was, was the bond, how would we enforce all?
And your costs, and the code enforcement costs. I mean, those are all, to me, legitimate costs. If the town were a business, they would certainly be looking at those in isolation and parlaying the revenues that would come in.
I, I, I just want to say, um, when you say this is, this discretionary decision, it's made very clear to you it was a discretionary decision. I, I assume it's the conversations you and I have had.
That's correct.
Okay, and, and that relates specifically to the issue of this is a zone change. And because it's a zone change, um, it is a change in the law. And of course, the town board, um, doesn't have to change the law if it chooses not to. This is, i- i- in that sense, it is discretionary. Um, other, other types of decisions like site plans or special permits or subdivisions, there are specific criteria that if the homeowner, if the property owner meets those criteria, then, um, they would be entitled to that, uh, permit, that, that approval. Um, on a zone change, I would agree that this is a discretionary decision on the part of the board because it does require a local law, a law to change the zoning for a property that already exists. So I just want to make that clear for the record as to why, um, why I have told you that it's a discretionary decision.
All right. For me, I, I mean, I, I've learned an awful lot about solar in the last several months. Um, I have done a lot of looking at different solar things in the last months. I can find, you go all over the place, you can find some that look pretty nice and are pretty well shielded and in good shape. You can also find some that are not. Um, I'm a little more on the personal level with these things. My biggest concern has always been farmland. When I was running and stuff, I said I would always work to protect the farmland. Um, the United States, I've got some figures. I lose the average is one point nine million acres a year that we have lost since two thousand and fourteen. And this is to regular development and everything else. And this is my concern with this one in particular. Um, it is on, you know, and you can go either way with it because it's like, it was on, it was on, I, I tried to look at it at just this site, not solar in general. I'm not against solar as far as energy, but I, I was looking at the site and it is on, you know, it, you know, it was, it was cleared within the last several years. But at this point, it is, you know, the solar farm has taken up pretty much all the tillable acres that are going to be on this particular parcel. I know the law says, you know, soil is what they're looking at as far as percentage. But my concern is still the tillable farmland and not losing more. I am a farmer and we, you know, land, losing land is, is a problem. So I, that's my biggest thing. I also, I'm a people person. I've listened to this whole, you know, all the different meetings and all the different boards that have talked about the bats and the animals and everything else. And what I don't see coming up a lot is, you know, a concern for the neighbor that lives, is gonna have this on three sides of them. I, you know, that is their nesting, that is their, you know, I mean, we worry about the bats' nests, but how about the people's nest that are living there? Um, and if, again, if this, and, and, and I like the property rights also. If this was Bill's house, I would say it's a whole different scenario because he's the one that's living there. If the neighbors next to it were, you know, I've heard in these board meetings, people say, yes, I would be fine with it. And if the people around this one were fine with it, I could probably, you know, and, you know, I probably would be for this particular site. But there, from my best tell, three of the closest, three, or at least three closest ones that have signed things saying that they're against it. And they're the ones that I think are the most important on this one. Here are the ones closest. If this was, you know, if this was going up down towards the Pompey pines, for example, on one of them vacant spots down there, I am sure we would hear upside down and backwards that people down there didn't want it. And I'm guessing it would happen wherever it goes. Um, and I do think that there may be spots that come up where I may be, I might prove one eventually if it's in the right spot. I'm telling future developers, if you're on a lot of, you know, and I, I call it tillable land. I'm gonna keep thinking tillable land because that's how I relate farming as the tillable land. So if you're a developer trying to do one, keep it off the tillable land. Talk to the neighbors, get the neighbors all on board before you're here, figure out ways. I, in some of these letters that have come, I've heard some great ideas, and these are from people that are for them. One came out and it's like, well, was, you know, was there something you could do for the stacers? Could you give them, you know, give them some solar panels so they would, could have cheaper electricity? There's no exact benefit to help them out, to make them want to come on board. So for future references of people that are trying to do these things, get people on board, find a way to get them. I have really liked Gordon. I have talked to him. He is one smart person, very, very well. But he is on the payroll of a solar company, and I'm telling you, they get good people. And I want to take my hats off to him because he has answered questions. He's been very well. Um, but I, you know, he is getting paid and, and this company, it is about money. I'm, you know, I've heard an awful lot about, you know, the green energy, and this is for the children and for the future, which, that's good. But what comes to my mind is, uh, minerals and the elements for these solar panels. They're not mined in the United States. I'm sure that the elements exist in the United States, but they're not. My question is, why not? Gordon has answered these questions for me. It's cost prohibitive. Why? Because, you know, labor, envi- environmental regulations, they mine these things. They mine them in Africa or someplace where they don't have to worry about D E C or any, any, you know, the equipment they're using isn't environmentally friendly. They don't labor and they ship it to China or Korea or somewhere else to be done, again, where regulations are lower. Um, so if they were being mined and being manufactured and being done in the United States, if you're really trying to do something that's gonna help the planet and help global warming and help the full thing, you'd be wanting them, you'd want the minerals to come from the United States, you want to manufacture them in the United States, you want to ship them in the United States, then you're making a, a worldwide difference. We're gonna produce electricity in a greener way, but we're not manufacturing it in a greener way. So when I, I would like to see the solar things in the future, more factor in there, worldwide, not just a little bit. So I'm generally against this particular thing at this point.
I'll go, Renee, and then you can. Mine will be short and sweet. I am in favor of it. They've agreed to go two hundred feet from the road. There's not gonna be any view shed problems. There's gonna be trees put up. Um, the energy is going to be local. It's not going to Canada like everybody has been saying around town. It will stay local. The town is gonna benefit. There's other benefits besides financial people should be thinking of. Twenty thirty, all new housing in New York State has to have electric heat. It's not very far away. We've got to be thinking ahead. I think of my kids, my grandchildren. You know, with what's going on with global warming and everything. And mostly, I feel the property owner should be able to do what he wants on his property. He's going through the proper procedures. You know, he's come before the town. He's not running a business on his property. You know, he's trying to do it the right way. And I think homeowners should have the right to do what they want on the property as long as they follow proper procedures. I mean, they want to do things for the town. I mean, there's, we've got the pilot agreement. Soil health is gonna be better for grazing. Gordon gave all this, this is on the town website. You know, we're gonna reduce CO2 emissions, renewable energy. In addition, they want to work with the town to create a scholarship or non-profit donation that will complement the pilot tax program payments we'll receive. So I just think it's, we've got to start thinking outside the box in the town of Pompey and not bury our heads when anything new wants to come in. We did that with Dollar General. They didn't want to have that, and it's one of the best things that's happened to the town. So I am in favor of it. Renee?
Well, um, I wrote out my thoughts on this and, um, the odd thing is I don't have the energy to, some of them have been addressed by Ann because I too support the idea of renewable energy in the town of Pompey. It's our future. Uh, we need energy and we are going to run out of it. And I talked to a farmer a couple of weeks ago who said exactly that, that he needs more energy. So farming needs energy. Um, I don't, uh, Ann said it, we can bury our heads in the sand and wait till twenty twenty-nine. Um, but the switch to electric in twenty thirty is coming for all new builds. And if we're not prepared to, with the ability to, what's the word? I'm gonna lose my concentration, um. So by that, there's gonna be issue, problems. There are many town residents. This is a controversial issue. But let's be clear, there are many town residents that believe that we should be supportive of renewable energy in this project. As I've said many times, I worked next to a solar farm for years. Um, I doubt that there's anybody in that room that can say the same thing right now. There's no noise, there's no pollution, it's clean energy. It doesn't add to greenhouse gases. It doesn't contribute, it doesn't, it, it, um, add to the traffic flow once the construction is done. There's no lights, there's no impact on the wildlife. It's well maintained. The only time you really need supervision, where it would be a town code issue, is during the construction. Once it's up and running, it's, it, it's a matter of ensuring that it's being maintained. So I don't buy the issue that we don't have the resources or that our resources are stretched. We've worked really hard in this administration to ensure that we have quality people in place to cover these um, kinds of eventualities. Um, I believe in this town government. I do. I believe it's, 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 um, able to, um, monitor this. Uh, we have a planning board, two of which, two of whose members, not just one, uh, voted to support this project. Both, one was the chair of the solar committee that, that, um, drafted the laws that we passed, who is eminently qualified and well-versed in, in solar. So I think we have really good people in our government right now, and I don't agree that it is, that we aren't capable of handling this, which I don't believe is gonna be more than two or three projects. I know people, um, have, have, um, suggested that, well, that could change. Anything can change, but I think this town is capable of handling change. And I think that's what should have come out of this. Unfortunately, it didn't. It did not weigh the fa- of cer- certain number of things because I feel like there are gonna be issues every single time we confront this issue. Every single time we confront this issue. And. So. I think that. For instance, use of prime ag land. There's almost no place in Pappy that's not prime ag. And to take twenty-two acres out, which is what this project would have required. To provide local people seven hundred houses. With electric, electricity. I think was a good swap. I don't. I didn't factor in bonding or decommissioning because again, I believe we're capable of handling that. And I didn't factor in the impact on property values because there's no evidence whatsoever that a solar farm. Decreases the value. Of, um, local, of, um, area residents in a rural setting. Um, the issue of fencing and screening and view shed, I did weigh that. Because I think that's the only real issue here. Is there's neighbors that don't want it. There's one neighbor that doesn't want it because it affects their view and they worry about their property value. And I think this is the elephant in the room, but since I see where this is going, I, I, I don't, don't hesitate to bring this up. That neighbor, this, this project. Has gone through every process that we have asked of it. The developer and the land donor, they've come up with everything we've requested, maps. Um, post boards. Um, responses to the neighbors' requests. Um. Um. Pushing the, the. Project back. Double what they would be required to do, accommodate the neighbors, but there's been no accommodation in return. I found the property owner of this bill and Gordon. To be, um, genuinely interested in working with this community. And it's unfortunate that we're gonna turn this project down because that's where I see it going. Um, the problem I have with the view shed issue is that the very neighbors that protest. The, the, the ruining of their view of not their own property, but their neighbor's property. Um, haven't done what they should have done. To have their paving business on their property. Which has come before the town and get a use variance if they could before the zoning board. Because it's a violation of our zoning laws for that. To exist in clean view and right on the road in, on Sweet Road. But for some reason, our citizens look or don't care about that. So that's bothersome to me and I don't understand. I, I really don't understand why that's. So it's not, I don't, please don't interrupt me, please. I, I don't understand that. I also did my homework. I looked up pivot energy. I looked at the projects they've been involved in, in the other towns. I looked, they have three projects that have gotten the approval in the Adirondack Park with the Adirondack Park Agency. And if you knew how hard it is to get approval. From the Adirondack Park Agency to do anything that might be a blight on our most. Wilderness, open space, land in this, um, state. Um, that should be impressive to you. Excuse me. Um, I just. Can't emphasize enough how much we need energy. I don't know, I, I'd be curious for, for Bill to, to maybe go back to that cost versus risk because I don't understand. I, I, I would love to have a little bit more understanding of what that meant. Um. And. As far as land, ag land. Being taken out of, um, use. The housing. We all know that in this town. The not one point nine million acres in, in the country. I don't know how many of them, what percentage. Come from, get, get, or because of housing, but I would bet. Way more than comes from a project like this because that's always been the problem in this town. Is that in order for farmers to make a go of it or people that own farmland that they rent out. They, they sell off what, uh, road lots. And that land is permanently taken out of ag. And yet we seem to accept that. That, that, um, permanent, um, elimination of agricultural land. But don't want to put twenty-two acres of someone's own land. Which is a legitimate purpose for which they can use it. Um. Into this project. So I don't know if I'm making any sense because I really don't feel good, but. I feel strongly that this should have been a project that we approved and it's not going to be approved. And I worry that there's not gonna be a project that's gonna be approved if, um, like this. This was a good location. This was a good project. Um, this was a good developer that has, um. Um, the best interest of the community. In addition to the development, we don't ask developers, housing or whatever. To. To pony up, give us extra. Um, commitments like we've done with so, the solar developer and yet this solar developer. Not only with the pilot, not only the pilot agreement, but was willing to do. Um, even more. Through scholarship and he's going to, was going to use local. Um, contractors. So. Um, I'm with Ann. I think this would have been. A father in our cap, not a disaster.
Renee, uh, did you want me to reply to your question about the risk and benefit? I was the one brought it up, not Bill.
No, Bill talked about it too. I thought Bill did, said he did his little tree and that there was, um.
Yeah, so I did it.
Whatever. It doesn't matter. You both can talk. Just would like a little more unders. I truly would like to understand why that, um, where, what the cost versus risk. Issue was. Maybe that would help me.
Yeah.
Um, it, it, so here, here's where, here's where I'm at with the whole thing. I, I, I don't. Other than reading the meeting minutes and, and, you know, coming up to speed that way. I, I wasn't as ingrained into the process as you all were and that goes a long way. I, 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 it sounds like the landowner and the developer have worked well with the town. Trying to do everything they can to get the project approved. It's an innovative idea. I, I, again, I don't have anything against solar. We do it around the world. I get the idea. Where I fall short on standing up and saying this is a great opportunity. I have never once been in front of a financial decision maker anywhere in the world and had them say. Wow, this is just a great idea. We should do it because we need energy. No, a lot of the times they say, yes, we need energy. Green energy is great. But what's the bottom line impact financially, environmentally? And really to the community. And I think some of those questions have been answered. I, I did read the most recent email about. Um, scholarships and Gordon and I did speak about that and I'm, I'm sure it's all done in good faith. Where I, I'm going is, I, I've never seen a, a, a project in this industry. Go through and not have a financial pro forma laid out from year zero in construction. All the way through year twenty-five, if it's a twenty-five year lease with what's the revenue generation? What's the pilot payment and how does that all shake out to the town of Pappy? That's the stuff that I, I don't understand. Do I? Do I like solar? I do. I think it's, as long as the government's providing rebates and aid, it's, it's, it's a functional solution to green energy. Um. That, that's really, and then from a risk standpoint, Renee, I think there's a lot of things that go along with having a solar farm. That many people maybe don't know. There's recently, two weeks ago, there was a solar fire. Um, and there's special, there's, do I think that that happens all the time? I don't. I think it was an inverter that caught on fire. The probability of that happening is really pretty low. The fact of the matter is it did happen, therefore drives the risk up to the forefront for everybody to consider. And I don't think we have a fire department today and Gordon said he would help. Get the fire department trained and up to speed and make donations to make that happen. That's. That's very accommodating, no question. But there's things like that that I view as. Alright, here's the positives, here's the negatives, and how does it all shake out? I just don't see the bottom line, Renee. I see the big picture field group piece and I, and I'm all for it. I just need to understand the financial. What is the benefit and risk to the town? And at this point, based on everything I've read, I, I, I still, I, I don't see it.
So, so the risk you see relating to. A potential fire, which you've already said is very rare, is greater than benefits that Gordon's list summary. Um.
Providers, yeah, there, there's, he provided a list of benefits. But I don't know what the value of those benefits are. There's no dollars and cents. That quantify the magnitude of that benefit.
You mean the six hundred and eighty thousand in revenue?
Yeah, but Renee, that doesn't go to the town. But this gets into what I did as well. You just take one year's pilot payment, the town, because we're looking at this from the perspective of the town. It's like two thousand dollars a year.
I know, but I'm looking at the perspective of offsetting taxpayer dollars. From whether it's school taxes, county taxes.
Yeah, but if there's a risk, if this doesn't get decommissioned properly, the, the school district's not going to go. And committed, that falls back on the town. That would be a risk.
But, so you don't have faith.
And we have to enforce this. Any work that Tim does has a cost to it, right? I mean, we don't segment his costs every month. The time he spends on this project would be a cost that would go against that two thousand dollars of revenue. So when you lay that out like a business would, most businesses would not take this project down. So my perspective, just because we're a municipality, doesn't mean we shouldn't treat it like a business. I mean, I feel like I'm a steward of the taxpayers' dollars.
I'm going to. Uh, I, I am too. We all are, Bill. I mean, that, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be questioned. What I don't understand is the lack of faith in the town government to handle this.
It's not a lack of faith, but if.
Yes, it is. If you're saying, if you're saying that you don't think we can handle it, you say, you basically said.
Even if we do it perfectly, it's two thousand dollars a year versus. What could just be reasonably several thousand dollars of expense. I mean, I like, I know we say there's no expenses. Once it gets put in, but. Just going over the bonding to make sure that bonding's correct is an expense. And so I just, and then if you factor in bigger risks.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
That's why I looked at it. I'm just giving you my.
No, I know, I. I, I just. I just can question that perspective. I, I understand it's a business perspective. Mine's not an emotional perspective. It's a perspective on what your holds. But I've said enough.
And the, you know, I, I, I'm gonna add in. On the business part of it. I feel very strongly that we're way more likely to face a. Lawsuit going. Or forward with it than we would if we don't. I think that is gonna end up adding extra costs also. I mean, I, I, it's almost. My opinion definitely gonna happen if it, if we go forward. I, it's, again, that is not that it's. Would, would not be successful, but it's still gonna cost. So I think, I, I think I have enough information, um, uh, to, um, draft. Something for the next meeting, which will reflect everybody's thoughts and comments, um, from the town board. And, um, and, and at least set the record. So that people understand why the town board chose to make the decision it made in this case. So. Um, if, if, if nobody else has anything else to say, I will have something prepared for the next meeting. Um, that will, um, I, I, I don't like generally. Passing or. Passing a local law that says we aren't going to pass a local law. So I, I don't want to, I, I've got to think through that issue. Um, and figure out what's the best way to handle that, but it's clear to me that. That there, it wouldn't be support tonight to pass local law two thousand and twenty-two. One, uh, as it's been designated. Um, and based on that, I'm going to have something prepared in writing. So that we can, we can button up the record at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for me about that? And we'll also include a seeker determination, um, in that resolution.
I have a question, just general process. Um. I see several comments on the chat. Um, will those, you'll be brought up during public comment?
Can't read them. Should we read them?
Not for you. Veronica reads them, but I'm just saying. Those are comments.
Well, we, we don't. Stop. This is not, this is, this is an opportunity for the town board to deliberate and make their decisions. The public has not weighed in. We haven't let this public weigh in on that. Though, on that, I'm commenting on it because we held the public hearing. We held the public hearing open for. On, uh, for three weeks, I think, if not four weeks. Um, and I think that portion of this has been closed. I don't think we need to. Have more public comment. We had all the public comment that would be required for you to make your decision. So I don't think it's necessary that, just because it's in writing, it, it doesn't.
No, I wasn't asking that, Tim. I just meant. I didn't mean for a part of the public hearing. The, or not public comment. I just meant that, well. You can.
If they want to, if they want to comment during public comment.
Yeah, that's what I meant. I didn't know. Yeah, okay.
Why don't we take a five minute break?
Yeah, I started already. Some ways that low. Or bad, or between all of us, it's just gonna be the same thing round and round. I don't know. And these gotta go to Dave decides.
Yeah, he doesn't sound.
So when I get done with them, they have. Do we do the after?
No, we're gonna do it in.
We don't have any screen to give these, I'm arch, so.
Otherwise, they'll call you and say.
That makes sense. It's gotta be seventy-seven in carriage.
I haven't either, but.
Bring them all back?
Eight eleven now.
Eight come in there.
Yeah.
And it's getting ready. Add some of these down.
Right, Nikki. Would you like to be yours?
Oh, yeah.
Please.
If the boards had the time to review my seventh regular meeting minutes, I'm looking for acceptance.
I'll make the motion. All in favor?
Secondly, our Toshiba copier, our lease is up in August. I worked with Terry Bird, who's our Toshiba rep, and she gave us two different options. One is to do, well, she gave us three. So right now we're paying two ten thirty-five. We do a thirty-nine month lease, it would be the same. We do forty-eight month lease, it would be a hundred and eighty-seven. And if we did a sixty-three month lease, it would be one fifty-six ninety-seven.
I think Tom said we cannot by law do a sixty-three, he told me earlier.
Okay, so the one we're currently in, she said, is the forty-eight month. So it actually, it would go down from two ten to one eighty-seven for the forty-eight months.
Let me ask you a question. Does this include, it says parts labor, is that repair parts or preventative means?
Um, I think it's both. And we also get our toners, the toners in the contract and everything too.
Good.
I'll make a motion that we go along with the thirty, the thirty-nine month, I think.
Thirty-nine?
Two ten a month, two ten thirty-five.
All right, I'll second this.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, Carrie.
Right, that's all I have.
Believe everybody that the code enforcement report, you're not able to be here tonight, I think it was laid out in front of you. Not, got it, just for the record. They had thirteen building permits for the month that Meg. So you can make a note of, note of that. Uh, town attorney.
Um, we have county planning referrals listed here. Um, I think that refers to a process that we're going to work on between Nikki supervisor and, um, the planning board attorney and the planning board chairman. Make sure that we're getting our referrals to the county, um, in the timely matter. And, um, I know that we had one that, um, has been delayed. It was, I will, I will take responsibility for it. And we're having a special meeting of the zoning board of appeals on Monday to deal with that issue. That's all I have.
Public comment in person, any?
I just have a question. Since you took all their commentary about solar, is there an actual vote that they vote yea or nay against this law?
As I said, we, we, at the next meeting, I will have a document prepared for them to vote.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have anyone to add to us?
Mary Mom, thirty-four oh five Sweet Road.
Um, Deborah here, twenty-ten Semestery Row, you want me to come up? Well, if anyone saw, um, at that time today, there is a, a situation where the, um, out of Manlius, um, officials are being sued by, um, some Manlius residents over a so, solar project. But I'm just asking, in this situation, you can see potential, James touched on it, uh, potentials for lawsuits. If the public could, if there could be a public vote, like a public referendum where we could vote, the whole town could vote on this issue, that would settle it. And, you know, there would be no more question, the town voted, and why not have, you know, democracy, why not have transparency and have everyone give their vote?
I think it's possible next month, if it's not a valid reason to have a referendum.
Well, it seems like a pretty hot issue, and, um, I think it would solve a lot.
So we discussed this at the last meeting. And I think I explained to, um, the public, um, I think you raised the question, didn't you? Um, we, we, there are certain. New York State is not like California, where they have something called initiative and referendum, where people can go out and get petitions, get, get something put on the ballot, and everybody would be able to vote on it. New York State constitution doesn't have anything like that. We are not, we elect representatives to make decisions on behalf of the people of the town of Pompeii, of the county of Aragaga, of the state of New York. Um, the state constitution lists very specific things that could be put up for a referendum that have to do with bonding primarily and, um, have to do with changes in government. This is not one of those things, and therefore it cannot be, it, it's not subject either to permissive referendum or mandatory referendum.
All right, thank you. I just want to also just call attention to the people that are here that are gonna be living. Um, I've seen their swimming pool area, I've seen, you know, right behind would be where they would be looking. So that would definitely, um, decrease their property value. So I'm just hoping, you know, that everyone, the board will consider that.
Thank you. We also, are there, Tim?
I, no, I don't think so. Yeah?
Thank you. When we talked with, with an energy, working with Philip Sikowski on the product discussed tonight. So wanted to present briefly on the project to respond to some of the comments that were made. I understand it's not on, on the record, but I just feel the need to voice some thoughts and at least express final thoughts that I have. So I, it's solar projects in the town of Pompeii and in New York, especially in the town of Pompeii, are certainly held to a higher standard than a lot of other development projects. I understand that, it's new, we're not sure what's gonna happen. Uh, and some of those long-term, long-term concerns were expressed. But we've worked really hard over the last eighteen months to address a lot of those concerns that, that have been expressed. And understand that we can meet that higher standard. You know, we're talking about a project that's twenty-two acres, right? That Mr. Osikowski cleared, previously overgrown, that he cleared. And he just wants to use for a solar project now. It's his property, he would like to build a solar project on twenty-two acres out of forty thousand in the town of Pompeii. Some of the points that were made, you know, James, you mentioned we should have contacted neighbors. I agree, we should contact neighbors. We made an attempt to contact the states, they did not want to talk with us. I'm not gonna badger somebody to, to get their attention, you know? I would love to talk with the neighbors, we'd love to find solutions that can work for them. And we're talking about a twenty-two acre project on forty thousand acres in the town of Pompeii that's gonna gen- generate energy for hundreds and hundreds of homeowners, of businesses. We talk about the energy production in the United States, most of it is foisted on a select few, whether it's coal or nuclear or natural gas. A few people that are living next to these fossil fuel plants or nuclear plants mining uranium, they suffer disproportionate health impacts because of our need for energy, because our desire to turn on a switch and get power on our outlets. We're talking about generating local power for residents and businesses with the only significant impact. The only impact that's really been agreed on, a visual one that can be screened and a setback from the neighbor, screened with the road trees, that's going to be a marginal impact. I mean, honestly, when we talk about, that's a marginal impact that we can manage, we can mitigate. So we did attempt to contact the neighbor. Dave, I understand that you wanna see shared financials, and we'd be happy to work through that with you. Of course, any developers got, yeah, detailed financials. We model out financials on our projects, we build in anticipated costs, the revenues, everything that's going into it. The, the pilot costs, the construction costs, the engineering costs, the permitting costs, the interconnection costs, of course. We know whether or not a project's gonna work. I tried to share some of those top line numbers with you, be happy to discuss it in more detail, but we have to draw a line somewhere between what's proprietary, what can be shared via confidential agreement. Yeah. How much can we open our coat pockets and just say, this is, this is what we're doing and this is how we're doing it? Um, and, and again, that's back to the higher standard, any other developer building homes or, uh, commercial property would not, you would not be asked to say, hey, what is your, what's your, what do your detailed financials look like? But if, if that's something that people are interested in, of course, we can look into that in more detail. Uh, Bill, the pilot agreement, I know it's not a ton of money, but we're talking about in the first year of operation, five thousand dollars for the town, five thousand for this, to the county, and then another ten, based on our estimates to the school district. So there's good money for the taxing authorities in the community, and it would go up every year after that. Um, decommissioning security, I understand, your legal counsel, town engineer, you, stuff you want to look through. We can pay escrow agreements, we, those costs can be managed and absorbed by the project. So I've heard a lot of the concerns around the risks, I've heard a lot of concerns around the costs, but I also know that all those can be mitigated. And based on what I see and what I understand, the benefits to the community, to the region, the town are more significant than those costs.
Thank you. Can I, Lauren, can I ask a question just on the pilot?
Yeah.
The pilot that you are proposing, or that you, it, it's not, you can't really know what the pilot is at this point, because you don't have an interconnection. I understand all that. Um, but what was the basis of that pilot? I mean, because as I understand the law, property is exempt from taxation completely, unless you enter into a pilot agreement, which, which can be anywhere up to what you would pay in full taxes.
Right.
So I mean, what's the basis for the pilot that, um, that you're at least putting forward, posing?
That's what the Onondaga County Industrial Development Agencies applied to recent projects.
Okay, so you're, you're using that as a basis?
It's a benchmark, right? It's not, it's not.
Okay. Of course, fine.
Yes.
Anybody else? Jason?
Jason Crawford, I live up on Burke Road. I can double back to the first part of the meeting, I just want to say, I really like seeing you guys live and in person. Renee, I wish you were here. Speaking on the solar, I think it's too early. Um, and I say that because Gordon pointed out, seventy-eight percent of the panel is benign material. Might even be a little bit more than that, might be less, I don't know. But there are hazardous materials in the panels. From the day that they go up, they're exposed to the elements, they begin to degrade. We know this. Where does the rest of that material go? Where's the runoff gonna go? It's gonna go into the ground, it's gonna make its way into the water. It's gonna make it into my well, it's gonna make it into my son's well, he's down on Coleman Hill, just below you. It's gonna make it into my daughter's well, she's on Sweet Road, just up the road from you. The well's lower than what your ground surface is, it's gonna get there. If we looked at all of the Brown's Fields projects in the state, you'd see, when they clean these sites, they clean them for reuse. They do not completely remove all of the contaminants. There's no way to clean it up once it's in there. There's no going back, once this is done, it's done. I want to be here in fifty years. I want to be here in seventy years. I want my families to be here with me.
You can do.
Martha Vigliata, uh, live, um, Gibbs Road. And, um, I think that a lot of the, uh, concerns about a project like this kind of boil down to, um, the risk of lowering the property values in the area. So I, uh, just, uh, found an article that summarized, uh, five different groups of studies that looked at, um, whether or not solar being, having your home, uh, near a solar farm, uh, affects your property values. Um, the first one, and, and I brought copies for all the, um, councilors to have their own copies. Uh, the first one is a University of Rhode Island study, recent, uh, uh, studied, uh, four hundred thousand property transactions in New England over the course of fifteen years, um, and finds that, um, property values for solar farms in rural areas had no impact. The solar farm being near, uh, residential properties and rural areas had no impact on, uh, property values when the homes were sold. That's number one. Number two, a survey by the University of Texas at Austin, that was a survey of appraisers. Um, in my reading, and I haven't read all that much, but in my reading, I, I run across this idea that appraisers and realtors have, uh, sort of a gut feeling that being near a solar farm, having a residence near a solar farm is gonna lower your property values. So they, um, they surveyed these appraisers and, um, the surveyed appraiser believed that there was a negative relationship. But when they looked at the people who especially believed that, they tended to be appraisers who actually had no experience appraising properties that were near solar. The appraisers that have experienced appraising properties that are near solars have the opinion that it doesn't have that much impact on property values. Um, a third one is a researcher with a, um, this, uh, company called Cone Resnick, which I think is like McKinsey, one of these huge multi-international consulting companies. And they have an evaluation practice, so they, um, do studies looking at, uh, they do impact studies involving solar. And, um, this researcher was, uh, who has done a lot of these studies, finds no consistent negative impact on residential property values that could be attributed to nearby solar farms. And she also said that, um, township and county assessors have a tremendous amount of data that points in the same direction. That property values don't go down when you're near, uh, solar farms. Um, she referenced a thousand acre solar project, you know, a huge solar project, much bigger than this one, in a certain county of Minnesota. Um, and there have been no adverse impacts on nearby property values. Owners of transitional agricultural lands like this one, uh, or lands that are in the path of development are concerned about changes that could have future impacts on sale values. But, um, in her study, she believes that solar developers are addressing these issues. It's now common practice for developers to include vegetative screening as a visual buffer and to conduct drainage file studies and being vigilant so that they don't reroute the drainage. There are no contaminants, the land sits fallow, allowing the soil quality actually to improve. It's not like you're paving things over, that's a quote from her. Um, remember that if, if land like this goes to residential development, that gets paved over, that, and that does have ecological impact, all kinds of ecological impact. Uh, and that land is lost for farming possibilities forever, because housing development is never gonna come down. Uh, number four, this guy's a local yokel, uh, Donald Fisher, who's executive vice president of CNY Palmer. Number four, this guy's a local yokel, Donald Fisher, who's executive vice president of CNY Palmeroy Appraisers. And he's also active with the group that put out this article, which is the American Society of Farm Managers and Rural Appraisers. He's active with that association and he's done several market studies examining the impact of solar on surrounding residential values. And all these studies found either a neutral impact or ironically a positive impact, where trends on properties after the installation of solar farms went up higher than time trends. That's number four. Number five, this guy is a president of a real estate and farm management place operation in Indiana. He says that as far as his experiences, rural properties likely see no impact. And tactics to hide the solar farm can help offset any negative impact on properties immediately adjacent. And then the last one is an appraise, someone who owns an appraisal company in Raleigh, North Carolina, who's done impact studies for solar developers in nineteen states. Has performed nearly a hundred matched pair analyses for the property near a solar farm, match it to a similar property that's not near a solar farm and see what the resale values of those properties are like. He's done a hundred of those in nineteen states. And he, he sees a range of negative five percent to positive five percent difference in square foot sales prices, which he said is significantly insignificant. If you take all the matched pairs and average them out, you find a difference of about one percent. He also feels like if the development is too close to a property or it's not concealed from view, that can have an impact. But as long as there's a hundred feet between the farm and the property and enough landscaping, you're not going to, you're not going to see any consistent negative impact. And these are on the studies, this is not like his worries about it or his gut feeling about it, these are the studies that he's done. Like I said, I brought copies for everybody, people seem to maybe have already made up their mind, but some of these decisions get made on the basis of worries and gut feelings. And these are studies. Sorry, I just started.
Barbara Stacer, three, four, five, seven, Sweet Road. I'm actually looking at the same article she just handed you and it does mention that, but it also mentions a lot of conflicting studies that do talk about the negative impacts on the property value. One in Rhode Island, there's another one in Texas and Austin, there's a lot. But, but the point I came up was to say you're going to find a study pro or against anything that you put yourself up there in Google, okay? The, the real issue and, and just as I stated in my letter to the town supervisor, the depreciation of the value of our home was just one of the many reasons. I do believe that there's going to be health concerns. I do worry about enjoying time with my family and my own quality or standard of living be affected because I'm going to be surrounded by a solar farm panel or of over twelve thousand panels. Those were where my basis of my concern came from, that I am going to have to live with that with my family. And anyone that's ever been up on top of Sweet Road and experiences the winds that we have up there, I, I can't keep furniture in my backyard, I can't sit, I can't keep my American flag hanging on my flagpole because it gets shredded multiple times a year and we go up and replace it every single time. I do not want to have to sit out in my backyard with my family and have to worry that something is going to fly off one of these things and hit near my heads. And you, we can all say that it's rare, it's rare, it's rare, but it's not rare when it's myself, my husband and my three kids sitting out there that I have to worry about that, that's not rare. And I don't want to be the statistic or the number that makes it rare or makes it not rare, to be quite honest. So, and, and I'm happy to share the email that I sent to Renee with everybody because depreciation was one of about seven to 10 reasons that I provided in my, in my letter. So I just wanted to say that.
Every letter that came to me, just so you know, personally, instead of to all board members, some came to all board members, were forwarded on to all the board members. And they will all be to Nikki.
For the record.
For the record, yes. Bill?
Hello, Sikowski, thirty-three, twelve, Canterbury Road. Apparently, I have a farm exemption on that property I cleared up. I pay the town a hundred and ninety-six bucks. That's what town, that's what the town gets right now every year, is that correct, Dan?
It's correct.
On her concerns, I've been holding back. Renee mentioned the elephant in the room. Only people that are polluting on Sweet Road, the Stacers. If you know anything about paving, John sprays the back of his truck with kerosene.
He absolutely does not, and that's a lie.
Okay. I go to the blacktop plant and they spray it with salt, but okay. That goes into groundwater, John is filling the property with asphalt that he's picking up from different sites and using it as fill. When I was there with the surveyors, I was taking pictures of the property. John is encroaching on the property thirty-five feet. John will be getting a letter from my attorney because I don't want an adverse possession claim that somehow he's been using it for ten years. Also, when I went by there, I looked in his burn barrel, which he's burning, he's burning plastic. I have a photograph, you can shake your head or you can watch. Your biggest concern, if you ever try to sell that house, you laugh.
I do.
Good. Yeah, I, I try to be, but I'm also very serious. They have to do, in order for them to sell that house, they have to do phase one, phase two environmental. Because of all the paving business equipment, because they're running a commercial business there. When you buy a piece of property, even now with oil tanks, you saw your house, you have to do an environmental. They come in a scratch and surf the ground, they do a, do a test and they tell you any particulates or oil or gasoline in the soil, that is going to have to have, if they ever sell that land. And by the way, who's going to buy an illegal operation that's not zoned for that? That's another reason why. I, I can't explain, there's so much that has been pent up and I've been trying to be a gentleman about it with the Stacers. Sean and I, he's a very good neighbor, but the facts are true. I have photographs of this, I don't have a problem with them, I don't want them to feel bad that this is adversarial, it's not. I'm just trying to lease the land. I was approached with pivot, I did my homework, I got the best possible company for this town, I live here too. And if you want to see pictures, I'll send, show you the pictures.
Did you give permission?
And can you pull the letters that we have on file from the town that was signed off by previous people, please? Please do.
Anybody online? Online?
Mary.
Nancy.
New Windsor from?
Wow. Nancy Burdock, seventy-two, fifty-five, Seven Year Road. I just want to applaud the three gentlemen who took the time to do their due diligence and understand the data and understand what was presented to them and understand that once we, once we go forward, we can't turn back and undo what's been done. I am not against solar, I'm not a particular fan of large solar farms. I think solar is better served for individual residences, that's besides the point. I, Ian and Renee, I appreciate your passion for solar. I'm not convinced that it's as green as everyone thinks, it's just that it's not being produced in your backyard. So you can't see what go, actually the fossil fuels, the, the, the toxic metals that go into the production of these things. But most importantly, Mr. Mr. Light, you, you hit the nail on the head when you said that it's the town board's responsibility to be stewards of the taxpayers' money and to understand the benefits and the risks. Also, Mr. Angelo, the benefits and the risks of, of what's actually going into this. So thank you for that. Gordon, while I, I appreciate your position, if you knew anything about the town of Pompey, maybe twenty-two acres out of forty thousand means nothing to you, but every single acre in this town means something to the farmers that farm it and are constantly desperate looking for land to farm.
I am the farmer.
So.
Nancy, please address your, your comments to the board and we don't.
Thank you, Gordon.
Just, just please to the board.
Well, you didn't say that when the other gentleman was just tapping.
I didn't get a chance. I, please, I, I didn't get a chance. Honest to God.
You want me to go all the way back or fifteen minutes back?
Everybody has new comments, present them now to the, on website or on, on Facebook or on Zoom. Is that what we're using, Facebook and Zoom? Anybody has any new comments, please present them now.
Were you raising your hand back there?
We were going to say, Jason, do you mind if we, because you spoke at one time.
So the newest comment I have seventeen minutes ago. Or at seven fifty-four, which is twenty minutes ago.
Okay, so those were all related to the discussion about the solar. If somebody has any new discussion about the solar, bring them up now. We'll give them a little bit of time just in case. Otherwise, I think.
Can I have Jason?
I'm here twice.
I'll be brief, I promise. Just a real quick observation, it just talked a little bit about the hypocrisy of us all, we're concerned about the environment, we're talking about the environment, but we're sitting in a room on a night when it's about seventy degrees out and I guess about fifty-five percent humidity, it'll get much better next, as it's able. And we got all the windows closed, we got no screens, we got the air conditioner running. If you really care about the environment, make good decisions all the time, simple things, really dead easy. Turn the lights off, every time I go down a road and there's a new something going up, they right away put up these great big huge lights. It's got to be part of what we do, they take energy. The majority of our energy in this area comes from, the cleanest source is hydroelectric, the next cleanest source is nuclear. We really need to reduce our consumption as part of the equation, that is a big part of it.
I have one comment that has come in in this last minute from Jennifer Edder. This is like watching a bunch of children digger back and forth, I have secondhand embarrassment. Gene, there are a number of comments here related to solar, they should be right into the record. Please review all the previous comments with regard to this issue.
So if anybody wants to speak, they speak in public, common period.
This is Gene, I don't know. Do it does affect property values, just like the towers did after years ago?
I'd just say that buddy who commented before wants to comment now, then they need to do it. Again, they need to repost their, their comment in the chat, otherwise it's not going to be read.
And that's a motion to approve payment of bills. Second, all in favor? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it, good night.
Night.